English, Newton.
Thank you. Next is items for discussion, our public-private partnership roadmap and timeline. This work session is taking place following a recent strategic planning ad hoc committee meeting where we discuss the roadmap and timeline moving forward for a public-private partnership. An item that is included in our strategic plan and also featured on as one of our goals included in our economic development study that was also completed a few years ago. And this workshop is an opportunity for all council members to hear the same presentation that was presented in the committee, to also provide input and ask questions as we move forward in the next phase of this roadmap. So, thank you all for taking the time to be here today and be engaged in the process. Mr. Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and other members of council that are present. What we're going to do is, we're going to spend some time walking through a presentation that we had shared with the Strategic Planning Ad Hoc Committee. We're going to do our best to kind of keep us moving along. You'll be introduced to another roadmap today that is P3 related, also get the benefit of some of the conversation. And we're going to talk specifically about a P3 name today. One of the members of the body asked that we come back with specific thoughts and suggestions about names. We've done that today, Ms. Barron. So, if we can, the first thing, first place we want to start is just review, then we'll talk about the P3 menu advisory group and roadmap. We're going to talk about some issues of control surrounding the P3 that have been really something we've talked about a fair amount over these last several months, and then we'll get to the name, and then we'll finish up. So, if we could just go to the next slide, please. I think it's important just to quickly look back before we look forward. And just as a reminder, I know you all have dealt with a lot of items, but how did we get here? How is this even before us? Let's go one more. So, in 2020, the county commissioned TIP Strategies, which is a Texas-based economic development consulting firm, to develop an economic development strategic plan, which they did. And they delivered that plan to the county in February of 2021 with the critical finding that the county could benefit from a public-private partnership, or also known as a P3. In December, way back in December of 2022, the council adopted a resolution authorizing county administrator, county economic developer and team to start exploring the creation of a P3. And so, where we find ourselves right now, and we'll take a look at the timeline that we're on. This timeline will foreshadow a little bit of where we're going, which is just that next slide. So, the timeline is, where we are now is the Strategic Planning Ad Hoc has sort of taken the ball and run with it here over the last several months. We've talked at length about the purpose of the P3, so we sort of backed up a little bit and talked about what should it be doing, and you'll see that in the menu in just a minute. We also, in our most recent Strategic Planning Ad Hoc Committee meeting, discussed the idea of getting additional citizens' input, not unlike what we did or what we've been doing with Penny. In the case of the Penny, there was an existing kind of piece of infrastructure, the Transportation Penny Advisory Committee. In the case of the P3, there's, and you'll see more here in just a minute, there's a recommendation to form a P3 advisory group for purposes of providing similar advice and input to the council regarding the P3. It is anticipated that, starting with the August break and through November, that there would be additional work done by the P3 advisory group, by the Strategic Planning Ad Hoc Committee, with regular updates to council, and then we would bring something to council to formally approve at least the parameters of it in November. This is important because the idea is to launch the P3, and you'll note, launch is not necessarily full operation, but to launch the P3 on or around December of this year. Launching the P3 means an announcement to the community as to the name, to the purpose, perhaps the initial board members, and other items around the P3 that this council finds important. The reason that we're separating the operating sort of transition of the P3 versus the launch is we want to get it launched, and then we want to take the remainder of the fiscal year, having talked with Ms. Thomas and others in administration, to actually figure out a way to transition operations and figure out how they will be transitioned, to what extent they will be transitioned to the P3. And so, then, of course, in next year's budget, next fiscal year's budget, then we could have the P3 appropriately dealt with in that budget. So, operational transition is all of that, which would include all of you. And then by July 1 of 2025, which is the beginning of the following fiscal year, the idea is that the P3 would be fully operational, recognizing that the parameters of that operation are still something that we are all talking about working through. We can go to the next slide, please. Many of you have been present. We've talked about the P3 menu. I just wanted to quickly discuss that with you all. The idea, the overriding idea is that the P3 should be formulated to meet not the needs of some other community, not the needs of an upstate county or a low country county, but to meet the needs of Richland. And so, in that regard, we talked about staple menu items, specialty items, staple items being the things that are fundamental to economic development, like industry recruitment, workforce development, and marketing. Specialty items being things that have become important to us, like advocacy efforts, childcare, focusing on transportation insofar as it impacts economic development, and certainly the idea of having an entity that brings people together in the community, brings businesses, big and small, together for purposes of promoting their prosperity. The next slide talks a little bit more about the P3 advisory group. This group has not yet been formed. We thought it critical to bring this idea before council by way of this work session. The idea is that it would have five to seven members. It would have limited duration, so it wouldn't live like an ad hoc committee would, and it wouldn't even live necessarily beyond November of this year unless you want it to. But the point is to get citizen input from business, education, and community leaders about the function of the P3. It's advisory, only it doesn't take binding votes, and to have it come alongside us in this process. And you'll see in the roadmap we're getting ready to show you, not unlike what we did with the T-PAC, where we had the T-PAC meeting and getting into the weeds, if you will, on certain issues, and then making some recommendations to committees of council that then can be reported to the full county council. You'll see the exact same strategy used here with the P3. So, if we can go now to the P3 roadmap. This shows the full roadmap, which actually started with the June 18 Strategic Ad Hoc Committee meeting. Everything in orange is that committee. Everything in green is county council, and everything in blue is this contemplated P3 advisory group. And you'll see that the thought is, while council is taking a much-earned break, the P3 advisory group would start to come together to start to get into some of the weeds, so that when council comes back from its break, it's able to then make some reports and recommendations to the Strategic Plan Ad Hoc Committee when it meets in September. And so, the roadmap is something, it's a concept that has served the council well with respect to the Penny, and we're hopeful that adopting it here with the P3 would also give council a sense of where things are headed and on what timeline. We can go to the next slide, please. We're not going to spend too much more time on this, Madam Chair, because I know, I think y'all end at 3:30 today, is that right, technically?
Four.
Four, okay. So, we've got some extra time. So, we wanted to at least give you the current thinking on the issues of control. We've spent a tremendous amount of time thinking about this, making sure that it's clear to council where its control lies, and ultimately it would be clear to the P3 board where its control lies. And we've sort of identified five different spheres of control. Of course, the first one is board appointment, meaning that the council has the power to appoint the majority of the board. Approval of incentives, which always remains with council in its committee structure. Funding and budget. The council and the county would be the main source of funding and budget. The operations of the P3 would be subject to review not only by the P3 board, but also by this council. And then ultimately, the economic development director and employees determining where they fit and where they land is still going to have tremendous amount of input from county council. The next slide just really shows you that much of what happens today, if we can go there, much of what happens today is going to continue just like it is. So, Richland County Council approves all incentives, economic development incentives for companies that come and seek to invest in our county. That would not change. Richland County Council has an economic development committee that makes recommendations for incentives, and likewise, that would not change. The executive director of the economic development function in the county brings projects to the executive, to the economic development committee for consideration, and that is also something that would not change. It is anticipated that an additional step in this process would be the input advisory from the P3 board, and then the P3 board may also be able to share with council other policy initiatives to be considered. In other words, other needs that it identifies in the community that might need to be dealt with by, through a new incentive policy of county council. So, it's advisory in that way as well. The very large arrow in the middle is probably the most important arrow, because it's the arrow by which funds flow from Richland County Council to the P3. The P3 has to appropriate funds. It is envisioned, sorry, the council must appropriate funds to the P3 for it to operate. It's envisioned that the council would approve the executive director. It's envisioned that the council would ask for, just like it would any other county department right now, it would ask for reports on what it's doing, and it would have oversight over the goals that are being accomplished by the budgetary appropriations being made. And of course, as we said before, it would appoint the majority of the directors. I'll take questions at any time, or we're just going to kind of drive through, and when we get to the end, we can take questions, whatever suits.
Do anyone have any questions at this time?
Oh, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
The makeup of the committee that we want to get started real quick. What about what that committee would look like, who should serve on that committee?
In broad strokes, Mr. Livingston, it needs to be representative of the community. It needs to incorporate business leaders, folks that, whose interests lie with the county. Fortunately, I think that's a long list of potential folks. It really would come down to who has time to help us over the next several months, and I think that is anticipated to be something to be created, a joint, if you will, effort between the chair and administration, and even Attorney Wright and I have discussed kind of what our function might be in terms of helping bring it together, because it's, it is not a typical committee, if you will, serving council. It is indeed advisory.
And skill set.
That's right. That's right. And we're open to all of that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Livingston, were you?
Yes.
Okay. Attorney Wright, and then Vice Chair Pew.
Yes, I just want to say that technically it's not a committee. It's just, that's why I said group, because a committee would be a formal creation of council, which takes a process. So, this is not that. This is just a group who would basically, and they would not directly present to council. They were present to administration, to the administrator, to myself, to staff, and the administrator or myself and staff were presented to, the recommendations to council, because it's not a committee.
So, it sounds like that would probably, well, that could be done administrative within, instead of council. Thinking folks wouldn't be administrative or done then?
Right, but council can recommend who people to be on that.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah, okay.
Just following up from our last strategic planning meeting where we discussed this, we referred to it more as a focus group, and where council members, if you had names, you would submit them to the chair. I would follow up and provide them to administration. So, Vice Chair Pew, then Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ray, I heard you say earlier in your presentation, five to seven. Which one are we going to do, five or seven? Or is that something that we need to choose now?
It's a range. I think it depends on names, who's available, what, like categories, what makes sense. We just didn't want to limit ourselves to one set number.
Got you, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. McBride, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been out for a few weeks, and I'm wondering, did I miss a step? Has the council already approved these, the P3? Has this been approved? Have we approved to have the PP3? Has that been approved?
Tell me, I guess, Ms. McBride, I want to slightly make sure I understand your question, why I'm hesitant. So, we did move forward with a resolution related to the P3, and then we have talked about and voted on our strategic plan, but is it done? No, ma'am. That's why we're having the work session and meetings.
That's what I want to clarify for others. The council had a resolution that would authorize us to explore creating a P3. So, it is my understanding, unless I missed something, that we are still exploring the idea of having the public-private partnership. Now, if I am wrong, now I need to be corrected.
Madam Chair.
You recognize Attorney Wright?
I mean, I believe that's correct. I think what we're doing now is just exploring the ideas and the potential makeup of it and how it would be set up and all that. So, that's what's going on now. So, there is nothing set in stone as regarding it right now.
Right, so I don't want the general public to think that the council has approved the public-private partnership, because right now, we are still exploring the opportunity that we might or we might not approve it. But in doing so, we're being provided with all the additional information that would help us come to that decision. And I just want to make the audience, the citizens that are out there listening, know that we are still exploring this idea. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
You recognize Mr. Jones?
And just to follow up on that, and to make it crystal clear, it's anticipated that council would be looking at this for a vote in November. So, you're right, there's a lot of work to be done to determine whether or not it's in fact approved.
I just want, wanted clarification for myself and for the others out there. Thank you.
Any further comments or discussions? All right, Mr. Jones?
Just a few more things. So, I wanted to just take a minute. We have suggested, if we can go to the next slide, suggested on a number of occasions that we need to be thinking as a body about the name of the P3, and there's a lot of reasons for that. You know, there's a lot more to the name than I think just letters, has a lot to do with the direction the council wants to see it go. And so, at our last meeting, it was requested that we actually bring back some things to look at, some hard ideas, if you will. And so, we're going to do that. We're going to start in more of a 30,000-foot view, and if we can, go to the next slide. I just wanted to give you a sense. Around the state, we've looked at each and every economic development organization that is county-specific. To the extent you don't see a colored item on the map, that doesn't mean that economic development's not happening there, but it also means there may not be a specific county organization, or there may simply be an economic development alliance that represents that area. And so, when you look down the list, it's not surprising that you see most often some sort of geographic marker in the name. So, the Abbeville County Economic Development Partnership, Kershaw County Committee of 100, Marion County Progress, One Spartanburg, y'all are familiar with that, York County Growth Partners, Advanced Dorchester. So, every name of every county-specific organization is listed there for you. And I will tell you that utilizing just the geography, while it might seem popular, is not necessarily the most cutting-edge thought these days, because of course, if you travel out of South Carolina, nobody knows what Marlboro, or York, or Spartanburg is. And most often, we are dealing with companies that are located on the other side of the country, or maybe even on the other side of the world. And so, that's a definite challenge to try to figure out how to deal with geography. It's not the only challenge. If you'll go to the next slide, please. There's a number of names that have come out of just this conversation, and there's been, some of this conversation is ad hoc, some of it's on the side, some of it is from just with economic development professionals and that current economic development department. And when you look down that list of names, you'll see that there's a great struggle on how to deal with the fact that we're Richland County, we're in the middle of the state, we also happen to have Columbia, which is the capital of the state, located here, and the minute you start to try to combine those two names, you end up with a mouthful. And you still have the same problem I pointed out to you earlier, which is whether you have Richland-Columbia or Columbia-Richland, the minute you get three states away, that doesn't mean anything to anybody. So, but nevertheless, there's a lot of ideas here, and these are good ideas. And, you know, the question is, is one of these the right idea? And so, we began to continue to talk, and so, we have one other one for you to consider, and we're going to go now to the next slide. And the next slide is really, this particular name is intended to really overcome what I think is two challenges, right? One is the whole issue of inclusiveness, which we've talked a lot about, that we want the P3 to be uniquely Richland, that we want the P3 to be something that is not reflective of how they do things in other parts of the state. Then you have the whole geographic issue, and then you have the whole issue of, you know, what is the philosophy of the P3? And so, using an acronym is one thought, right? It's not the thought, but we wanted to bring you something hard to consider. So, if you consider the acronym that Richland is supposed to be a place that invests in the success of everyone, not big business, not small business, not black, not white, but everyone, then you're left with the acronym R-I-S-E, and if you'll go to the next slide. If you use R-I-S-E, rise, as the name of a group, then you can always use a tagline to try to explain to the world, who are we and where are we and what are we doing? So, the tagline here is elevating opportunity in the heart of South Carolina. Why is it the heart of South Carolina? Because it's in the middle. If you look right behind you, that's about the perfect logo, right, to show where Richland County is. And so, you wanted something to consider, you have something to consider, you know, you can tear that up and start over, you can make other suggestions, but the point of it is to try to come up with a name that means something to you and to us, but a name that also may mean something to those that are outside the state. And being saddled with geography is a real challenge that you all might want to consider. So, what's in the name? It's up to you, but that's what we have for you today. And to the extent we decide to go forward with the roadmap, our next important step would be to convene the advisory group during the August break. That's all I have for today, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. I'd like to open it up for any questions, comments, or thoughts on the presentation. Ms. Toracia, you're recognized.
You. I just wanted to compliment Mr. Jones on that idea. Did you do that yourself? Was that a brainstorming meeting?
That's a, that's a group effort by the Parker Poe team and others. So, very much a group effort.
Thank you. I will just say that I've spent, since the last meeting, trying to think through things and have been unsuccessful in.
I said, what did you come up with?
No, no. I'll share some ideas later, but none of them ride, rose to the level of this.
Thank you so much, Ms. Toracio. Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
Thank you, and if it's appropriate, I move that Ms. Toracio not share any of the names that she came up with. But I do have more of an in-the-weeds question, and I understand that a lot of this is to be determined and that we're fleshing that out. My question is more from looking at this timeline, when you envision that metrics would be created. And so, one of the reasons that I ask is, whenever you do something different from the way that you're doing it, obviously, you're doing it for a reason. And so, coming off of our most successful economic development year ever, I would want us to be clear as a body, what are the metrics that we're going to use to measure the success of the P3? And then additionally, as part of the metrics, I don't have the right word here, so pardon me for this, what is the signal or what is the trigger that says we have or haven't achieved our objectives, and then we need to look at a new course, whether it's going back to the old structure or modifying the P3 structure, whatever that is? And so, in this process of the advisory group that's going to give some suggestions, and all the other squares that are on the roadmap, where do finalized metrics come in?
Recognizer.
One person's opinion. That would come in in the January to June timeframe. So, those.
Wait, I'm sorry, after it's created?
Right. It's not going to operate until July 1. So, from January to June, there's an operational transition that frankly is supported by the administration of the county to develop the budget, to develop how the assets, if any, will transfer, and also, I think, to develop the operating plan to ensure that the budget that you're funding is actually achieving the goals you want it to achieve. The reason you need to create it first is because the board of the P3 needs to have input on what that operating plan is. And so, before it actually runs, it needs to walk. And so, to get it created and then have it have the operational transition take place is the exact time during which those metrics would be created.
Okay, well, from my perspective, I guess I would, I couldn't disagree more wholeheartedly with that approach of doing it first and then creating the goal second. I certainly understand that the body that exists to run the P3 would want to be part of creating metrics and goals, but we as a body, it seems, should have specific metrics of this is what we're trying to achieve, this is what we want to do, this is why we're creating the group, and then the group should interact with those goals, and if they want to propose tweaks or changes or what have you, then certainly that makes sense. But saying, we're going to create this whole new structure, and then later say specifically what we want them to achieve, that feels backwards to me.
Madam Chair.
You recognize?
So, the study that I referenced earlier, that the county paid $75,000 for, lays out the goals to be achieved by the P3, I would think we would be, we would be adhering to those as best we could.
So, then, if I go back to the, again, that's why I'm asking, so those would be the metrics. I'll go back and look at that report. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Don't feel rushed. I mean, if you want to take your time and share thoughts, we have a little time. You sure? You were at the committee meeting, so you've heard this, so, okay. Did you have any name suggestions?
Trying to bait you now.
You know, some, I didn't want to, I don't know about yours, Mr. Pew.
You don't want to hear yours? Mr. Pew, you don't want to hear yours?
Vice Chair Pew, you're.
Madam Chair, thank you for recognizing me. I have a name suggestion.
Mr. Jones is getting his pen. Go right ahead, sir.
How about the Richland County Economic Development Alliance? It's a group, not a committee.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? And Ms. Corillo, I'm assuming we didn't have any council members online, correct? Okay. Well, yes, ma'am. Ms. Newton, you're.
But also, I feel like.
Ms. Berry finally came to her.
Yeah, so I feel like we should let Ms. Berry.
Go ahead, Ms. Berry.
In here the whole time.
Well, we gave you the opportunity to share.
Yeah, I was just trying to decide if I wanted to say it.
Okay.
So, I don't know, maybe it's just me, and I think I brought this up at the last meeting, and that is, it just seems, I know we're exploring, we're exploring this P3, but while we're exploring, it does seem like it's pretty much green light, let's go. Because, and I'm going, and I'm going to go back, I'm going to go, yeah, that's the purpose of the exploration, but we're spending a lot of money and a lot of time for us to take a vote that could very well, people may say, well, you know, I don't want to do a P3. So, and that's, and I'm, and I'm only making an observation based on comments.
Comments or comment? Okay, I'm sorry, I hadn't heard more than one. I heard Ms. McBride question today about if the vote was final or not. Past that, I have not heard, I guess, comments related to why are we doing this? And so, you know, I think at the Strategic Planning Committee meeting, we discussed there's a strategic plan, there's goals and initiatives and plan that we all approved, and in approving as a body, as approving a strategic plan, one's thought would be that you would make every effort to complete the goals listed in the plan that you agreed upon. And so, this is one of those in there, and we have discussed this, this is not new. We've continuously gone along the way to answer questions that folks have as it relates to what does the menu look like, what would a makeup look like, and we continue to explore. And so, I guess my question, I'm not sure, I guess, why you would say you feel like it's not final, or what other steps we should be taking. If this is something that we said we wanted to do as a body, then to me, the next steps would be having these conversations, right?
Correct. So, please let me be clear in saying that I'm clear about what we're doing. I am. I am clear about what we're doing. However, I ju, what I, you know, I'm all, I just want us to be fair in our discussion, because I've said before, when we, you know, when we voted on a strategic plan, and we're aligning all these things to go along with our strategic plan, then surely we're not going to spend all this time, all this effort, the money, and then to get to a place where it says, oh, nah, I ain't going to do that. That's all I'm saying. I don't, and, and this is not pointed to the committee. This is really pointed to us, because as we move forward in having this conversation, I don't want us to, to continue on the path. If we don't want to do it, I think we should have said that a long time ago. Or if, you know, if we don't like how, how the train is moving, input. That's why I said in your committee meeting, that, because I want to get my input. I want to give it, I want to hear it firsthand. I'm here again in this work session, even though this is the same presentation, because I want to make sure that I'm fully understanding what it is we're doing. And I'm clear, but it just seems like every time we come, it, it's almost like a, a lingering something. And maybe it's just me. So I'll just say it's Gretchen. And it could just be me, but it just seems like it's a lingering something of uncertainty. That's it. I, I'm not, I'm not trying to have a, um, to split hairs, or to even, you know, go down a rabbit trail that's not needed. I just want, I want the body to be clear about what it is we're doing, because this train is moving, and we spent a lot of time and money towards it. That's it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Baron, um, for sharing your thoughts. I definitely don't want it to be any, um, for things not to be clear, or for there to be uncertainty. Um, I would have hoped through this process, that the time that we have taken to not rush it, to really have the meetings, to have the conversations along the way, all council members to give feedback, that everyone would be included, and there wouldn't be uncertainty about what it is that we are discussing or doing. We had a resolution that we all agreed upon to move forward and continue to explore. And I feel it's just like many things that, you know, we talk about and discuss. When the time comes to vote on it, everyone has the ability to vote yea or nay, but it is a part of our strategic plan, and I think the whole point of this is to talk and get feedback, so that this P three is reflective of what it is that we uniquely want it to be in Richland County. And at this point, I would hope that all council members are aware, are engaged, and know what's going on. Now, if you are not in favor of it, I think that's different than you not knowing what's going on, or where we are, uncertainty about it. But I also feel as if you're unaware at this point, or uncertain, then it is your responsibility to reach out to staff, or to myself, to have the conversations that you need to have, so that everyone feels clear about where we are. Um, so I, I hope this work session will serve as a time period for you to ask all your questions. So if there is any uncertainty, you can help to clear that up within yourself at this time. Ms. Newton, did you have something?
Yes, but, um, I've already spoken, so Ms. McBride raised her hand. I'm happy to, to yield, because mine goes in a slightly different direction.
Ms. McBride, I missed you. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to thank the council for the work that they've done in terms of, of exploring P three. And you know what a strategic plan is? It's a plan. So we have strategic plans, and we do a little research and get information together. And then, we decide what part of the plan we're going to implement. And so as a part of the strategic plan, this did come up, and that's what we're doing in these work sessions and everything now. So the questions are really related to the plan. This is something that recommended, that we look into. And now, that's what we're doing. So the questions are coming, you asked for questions, and are there concerns? So it is our obligation to raise those concerns that we may have, and to then, at the appropriate time, take the vote. So and I think that the public understands that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Ms. Newton?
Thank you, and I think as I, I found part of the answer to my question that I was looking for, but in terms of, I guess, this conversation, just to be clear. So for me, I'm one of those people who is completely clear on the process. I'm not in favor of the P three in its current iteration, and I've expressed that at any point that anyone has ever asked, including at the last meeting. I said, I'm watching the train leaving the station, and I'm here at the station, watching it go. Um, so from my perspective, I'm participating in this process as a member of the body, because while I do have concerns that make me not supportive, I want to see, are there things that I can do that would help me to, to support this process better? And so, I guess I'll say this, because I feel like I have asked at, at previous meetings, and I don't feel like I've ever gotten a satisfactory answer, and it's part of my real concern about the P three, is that a solution is a solution to a problem. And I don't know that I feel like, for me, our problem has clearly been identified, number one. And number two, that whatever this problem is, so say, for example, uh, certain types of private investments to attract economic development, I feel like the P three is the only possible solution that we've looked at, whereas there are other counties, municipalities, and governments that have solved the problem other ways. So I'm fully for us doing whatever is best for Richland County economic development. I believe that there are numerous, um, P threes that have been extremely successful, whether or not, when I'm not, but I'm just not sold on whether this is the format that's best for our community at this time. So, totally clear on the process, want to be completely supportive, but lest there ever be a moment when someone feels that I wasn't transparent with my feelings, that's what they are. And, and I appreciate this format for us to air those concerns.
Mr. Walker, did you have something earlier?
I think I did.
I think so too. I, I'm sorry, there were a few comments.
It's all right. Um, Mr. Jones, my question's for you. Um, are we at the point now where you are, I guess, seeking input from council as to a potential name, you know, for AP three? Did I catch that correctly earlier?
That's really, Mr. Walker, in response, just to some, to some of the comments made at prior committee meetings, which was, you know, this, this, we always have, let's brainstorm about a name on the agenda, and it, it was just suggested, we'll bring some names back. And so, I, by no means are we at a decision point. Um, we just were being responsive. I, I think there's a lot of conversation to be had about that.
As I understand it, I think there was a, um, study done. I'm not sure if that was 2020, 2021, but there was a group out of Texas, like out of Austin, Texas, who performed a study, um, you know, at the behest of the county. And I think that's part of Econ, Econo Development's, uh, the Richland County Econo Development Department's uh, strategic plan. And so one of the things that was recommended in that plan, um, you know, was AP three. And if I recall correctly, I believe one of the findings was that in Achilles' heel, uh, for Richland County is sort of this lack of identity. And that when you have, um, you know, various groups, or developers, or companies looking at the area, um, you know, they don't, they don't know if they're, uh, if they should go to the city of Columbia, if they go to Richland County, if they go to Forest Acres, it's just sort of a lack of an identity. And so, that being a barrier, I guess, to progress, not that we're doing poorly here, but certainly, uh, there's room for improvement. And so that was one of the group's findings, um, which is what jumped out at me. So I think I would suggest that as part of any, um, potential name, in the event the council decides to go this route with a P three, that is something that kind of takes into account, uh, that concern, or that finding, uh, from, you know, the study, about just a name that, um, you know, that sort of, trying to figure out the best way to say this, but something that is reflective, you know, of the area. I don't know if calling it Richland County, yada, 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 if that does it. I'm not saying we call it Columbia, but I just, you know, but whatever it is, whatever the name is, it's something, uh, that, uh, certainly, uh, is identifiable, you know, to, you know, the area. But I do know just from reading that study, and I've read it a couple ti, or a few times, rather, uh, that was, um, a challenge, you know, that, or weakness, rather, that was identified when it comes to, uh, engaging, um, you know, Richland County, or this, or this specific area, um, when it comes to economic development. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other? Comment? You recognize, Ms. Newton?
So I accidentally lost a page. So thank you again for the roadmap. I think you may have forever, um, introduced square boxes into our planning processes moving forward, Mr. Jones. Um, I, I guess I'm curious to know, oh, thank you, um, for pulling it up, Ms. Carrillo. Um, so we have our work session here. Uh, approximately a month from now, we have the first P three advisory group. And so I guess I just wanted to be clear again on what the process is for, for creating that group. I, I've heard today that, that there are names that are being submitted. Is that a group that's being limited? Are we supposed to, not that we can vote, uh, today, determine a process for, for how that's going to work? Because that's, that's the next step on this square, and it's here without an intermediate meeting.
Thank you. Um, so Ms. Newton, my thought process is, we have a council meeting this evening where the Strategic Ad-Hoc Committee does, um, report out on what happened at our last meeting, which this presentation is essentially what was presented at the last meeting. Um, and I will ask the full body to provide any suggested names that they have, to then provide to administration. And they'll narrow the list down to make sure that we have a diverse group representing, like I said, large, small businesses, different industry, so that they can move forward with the advisory group meeting.
And so then, these are meetings that are going to be facilitated by administration?
Yes, ma'am, in conjunction with Mr. Jones.
Okay. And again, as part of this narrowing is there, and I was at the last committee meeting, I'm just trying to remember, um, for my information, is there like a target number that we're going for?
The end group, I think we're looking at five to seven at the end, not to have it be too large.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, well, looking at the roadmap moving forward, we have our work session today. And then you see there are several proposed advisory group meetings before we have a Strategic Ad-Hoc Committee meeting. Um, I encourage folks to please continue to look over, um, menu items, the P three menu staple items, and specialty items. Uh, this was discussed in committee, um, may have been end of last year, or earlier this year, where, uh, folks in the committee discussed it, but then the whole body provided feedback. Well, if you have any other thoughts on those, please feel free to share as we continue, uh, to move forward. And I encourage anyone that has any other questions about next step, please reach out, we'd be happy to discuss. Uh, but at this time, any other, I guess, discussion will continue to happen in the Strategic Ad-Hoc, Strategic Planning. Mr. Jones, anything else?
No.
All right. We're at item number three, adjournment.
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion is second, Madam Clerk.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.